Let's believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Um, Oliver and Brian House? Oliver and Andrew?
Here.
Oliver and Kathy Burton?
Here.
Oliver and Rose Rosenstein?
Here.
Approval of agenda? Motion made.
May I assume that approve the agenda?
Motion made, your second?
A second.
Motion made, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Exen agenda, we have recommendation of motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve the concerned agenda.
Anybody want a second that?
Want a second that?
First and second made, all favor? All right, any opposed? Okay. I'll look for them. We had one, but they had to reschedule, but I believe you hear, I was talking to you, so um, I was gonna talk to the senator, Brian, this is the guy that puts on like the vendor shows and everything, so I had him, I figured coming down filling up if you guys are looking. Well, this is overall here.
Sure.
So if you want to give your presentation, the floor is yours.
Sure. I went by the park the other day, actually.
Wait, what's your name again?
Alex. Went by the park the other day, and it's not to scale, obviously, a little rough sketch there of what I had in mind, now this would be the former park, the park, the park, or hit with the baseball field and all that, you know?
Your park, okay.
Such a little rough diagram of what I had in mind, and the event itself, there are over forty events like this across Missouri every weekend, it is a vendor and art event, and there's also a cannabis element to the events as well, so there would be cannabis vendors and all that there as well. And our idea was, my idea for it, and what I have been doing is thirty-three percent of the door goes to local causes, and whether, I mean, that would be up to you guys to decide where that would best be used. And from there, when it comes to, you know, advertising, all that stuff, that's generally all on my end, I'll be all vendors there, unless you guys have one specifically that you would want there, if there's any local displaced by workers, just a little plug or anything like that, that could use a pre boot, that's essentially money.
Is it all gonna be all art, or just a little bit?
It'll be a percentage.
It's a bit of everything. It comes to the arts, the private vendors, or anything.
But you said your experience, what's the distribution of each of those?
Meaning?
Two to one.
Is it like a?
Oh, like how many art vendors?
Thirty percent art, fifty percent cannabis?
It's about two to one art versus cannabis, so there's about a third of the vendors will be cannabis related, and then two-thirds will be art craft or whatever.
And where do you advertise this, and what's your draw off?
It is a whole lot of Facebook, Instagram, pretty much all the social medias, I print out fires, take those to dispensaries as well as, you know, bars, and pretty much anywhere that'll let you put a stack on their table that's fairly local, I'll put a stack on their tables if you can see it. So that's, that's the advertising, but the first event like these are always the smallest when it comes to turn it on until it's established.
Just three years ago.
So knowing that, a very conservative projection would be about a hundred and fifty through the door on the first one. And then from there, if we're looking at, I have a friend that also does these in St. Clair, his first one was a hundred and forty people, second was three twenty, third was eighty, he's over six hundred and almost everyone now, so it's a matter of establishing people knowing that that's there, and then they need to do a lot more work now about advertising, so things into play. So we have the crowds there, that's a matter of time, but I can definitely get a solid base off the start.
And where are you based?
I'm in St. Jen Otting, Missouri, so not too far away here, about fourteen minutes first to get here.
And the art stuff with, like jewelry or?
There'll be jewelry, there's gonna be people that do painting, there's gonna be people that print out like, really high resolution metal prints, there's people that I plan on being there and setting up, there's a vendor that I have that does like a kids zone, because I like to make all these as family friendly as possible, so that means, I mean, you can see all the cannabis vendors are in the fence, so there's not really a way for a child to run in here or anything like that. So that actually, that worked out beautifully, seeing that, there was that, I wrote the section off, it's already wrote off, so. Yeah, so I plan on doing that, ideally I would get, depending on power and all that, I'd have to see if I could bring in an acoustic guy, or if there's enough power down for a whole band setup, or?
You wouldn't need four or five or something, I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, that was on the, I saw him, I saw him bad back to our bathroom. Yeah, I saw the bathroom set over there, and I was like, is there even gonna work right? Say that, they're always, and so I was discussing with him about, you know, if he had a four or five vendor.
Yeah.
I know art, um, deals does, but I don't know how much they are, I mean?
I've written this before, and that's, that's something I'd call a few different companies for, and just get dates on and all that, and you can see kind of cost me.
What kind of food trucks do you, have you experienced yet?
Uh, I've done everything from pizza trucks, what are they called?
Uh, fired?
Fired, yeah, the fired food truck, they're usually, they go up to St. John's, there's a lot of vendors.
Doodles.
I was gonna have doodles, and their coffee company at the last one, but they ended up getting the flu, so I didn't wanna bring that to an event, I fully understand that, thank them for it, but.
So there's just more than one there, or the, like, what should I advertise?
I usually, I usually have at least two food options there, yes.
Is this a one day thing?
Would be looking at, in an ideal world, it would be Saturday, May thirty first, would be the first one.
That's not what I was saying, is it?
No.
No, no, there's more.
When you say?
The more is the week before that, so it's the weekend after.
When you say it'll be the first, what, are you presuming that you use like periodically, or?
I mean, I would like to do it a couple times a year, as often, I mean, at least, there's a couple other spots that I also use, like for winter, that's an indoor spot over Farmington, Almood's, and that kind of stuff, but yeah, if this could be the spot where I have them, I'd be with them every two months, you know, have them all.
Parking.
Where does?
So you use the field for parking?
Well, yeah, that was the only spot I could really think of.
Absolutely.
And then I have this taped off, and on the other side of the road, and at a designated cross with somebody there, just in case cars are going in and out, I don't want any kids and they run by to get run over, so it's like a little designated, that's where they have to cross, so.
How many people are there on your event team to handle stuff like parking, and getting people situated, and stuff like that?
That can be up to six that I have, I don't have to pretty much figure out what exactly I would need, and who I would need where, and then assign folks if that can work.
What about, like, I would use?
Insurance and stuff, I have everybody that comes through the door, signs waivers, that protects myself, the land, property owners, everything. And that is a waiver, some feeling you can technically get past the waiver, I understand that, but it is a large deterrent, having a waiver in place, so.
Is your LLC cover events, like my, are my LLC impaired law?
Right, my LLC, my LLC is for my company, which is actually a seed company, which is, what I do is I select and create cannabis seeds, and sell the seeds, so that's what my LLC is under.
Okay. Like the parallel is, you know, picnic, where there's an open bar, you put some beer and stuff like that, and the, you know, the issue with cannabis, oh, it's legal, well, it's supposed to involve alcohol too, it's like not good for kids, you know, alcohol isn't, and probably not good for families either, in the same creed, because kids tend to use, well, I don't know, probably use it about the same frequency as alcohol, although I mentioned, but it's not good for their brains, for their young brains, and is there anything like, kinda like, to, that's like, driven from a health perspective, you know, as long as there's kids around, like, you know, what's, what's good for you, what's not, or anything like that?
And the?
Like a healthy living thing, or whatever.
Oh, like, wanna see like negative, you want like negative, positives, if you have this and all of that, well, I could definitely go into the detail on that.
You mean literature for people to have there, or you mean?
Like, yeah, so it's kinda what I'm wondering, is like, is that something you want to have there, or is that something that you just?
Well, that's kind of, for adults, I mean, they're all responsible for themselves and whatever they're gonna do, from a kid's perspective, you know, there's benefits supposedly, you know, for CBD, and you know, health benefits, or whatever, for chronic pain medications and things, but then, and there's a lot, wide literature generated that, you know, that addresses the fact that it's not healthy for kids, you know, particularly when their brains, you know, synapses are like going all over the?
I personally am also a believer that recreational use should be twenty-five and up, and if that's when your brain's done, then they are lost, they're twenty-one, so.
So if, so if there could be some angle, you know, directed at that, I think that would be beneficial for the community, so, for the obvious reasons.
Right, I mean, there's, there's always positives and negatives to anything, I mean, even alcohol, of course, I mean, there's, just like Derek, it's like, I mean, we can, we can weigh differences, you can drink too much and die, there's no such thing as smoking too much, you know, it's like, so there's those differences.
Well, there is, if you fall asleep and you crash.
If you drive, if you drive a nice.
It's like bikers on the square, you know, and their vendors are drinking, and they've got motorcycles there, and they're gonna ride there and drink, you know.
And you still have to be of age to bike.
Right, community events, so I feel obligated to.
I understand, absolutely, absolutely.
Is that, is that something maybe you can coordinate with the dare officer, have him out there for the kids?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can certainly do that, or?
Be like, honey, help a bar, I know, just throwing that out there.
I know a couple vendors that would be slightly biased towards beneficial with cannabis, of course, yeah, a lot of it, that would be happy to do a full class on it during the event, like, hey, take forty-five minutes, this pavilion, boom, you got a whole, that would be good to do, so. That's definitely doable, yeah.
And if I needed a stage, would, would you, your trailer, or a band? That, I've certainly used it for that before, that can be done, it can be raised, you know, jacked up, there's, and there's like, you know, like, someone falls off it or something like that, then that's, it doesn't add any together, so, that stage, that's it's an inherent risk with that. So that's, you know, like two cents.
Does Eric have a trailer you wanted, you would know more than you?
Or somebody that built a trailer, mine has a trailer, and if I fell higher on mine?
No, that's not, your railings are like triple over railings.
The ones that force you to. Anyway, is that it?
Pretty much.
Is there a cost for this, that they would?
Their cost for us, us, or?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, for people coming in, yeah.
For people coming in, yeah, generally what I do on that is, entry would be fifteen, five, I'd be able to go.
Fifteen per car, fifteen per person?
Fifteen per person, yeah, and that's in the door.
Is that typical, that seems kinda high, is it, or?
It's actually low nowadays, would you not?
Do you charge the same price for children? So it's everybody?
Yeah, because I would also, what I don't have, and might be on, like the kids zone, which would be a vendor there that does face painting, canvases, all that's in the paint, there's some stuff to play with and all that, I'm also looking into potentially getting like a lunch pound's house and all that, so they have something additional to do while they're there.
And then, one of the criticisms of your effect is that people do stuff in the arts, they'll remake this up, they'll, you know, they'll bring in, like, a lot of the vendors that I know, original artists, they're all hand crafters in the building, that's good.
So is that a stipulation that we make?
That I make, yes, they're like, and like, when it comes to the cannabis vendors, I specifically target homegrown, hundred percent organic people and all that, so it's, I know there's a certain standard and policy across the board.
And you checking to that, just to see?
And there are approximately ten local vendors from the St. Jen area who are interested in vending, so incorporating the community as much as we can.
And I talked to Nate Schultz, he called me today too, and he talked about bringing some of his down, and then some of his, talked to director tours in the St. Jen of Eve, and some of the other vendors' arts and crafts and things.
And you said Nate brings some of his down?
His what?
His.
Or his?
His antiques.
Antiques, so, I mean, he's more of a?
I don't know.
I mean, if he wants to, I mean, is there a cost for locals here for us, I guess?
When it comes to, to local vendors, to you guys, like, of course, that, you know, you help and all that, I'm not gonna judge it, those are not.
And do you have your vendors, do they typically like put pop ups up, the ten by ten pop up tents, so would he charge?
Depends on the vendor, the cannabis based vendors, I generally charge a hundred per spot for the vendor, and then the arts and craft vendors, I have that, so that the, in general, they generally make quite a bit less than the cannabis vendors, which is, keep it a little more carematious. Food trucks, I generally don't charge per spot, because I don't want them to start at deficit, because they have to overcharge people that they're gonna need it for, so I'd rather them keep their menu prices where they are normally everywhere else, and.
You know, what if, like, the fire department set up a grill with smoked sausages or something like that?
I haven't talked to any vendors, or any of the food vendors or anybody yet, so I have to spot like lock down, and I know, and then. After all, I know I could have, I'll probably have over half of the vendors within forty-eight hours I've signed up, so.
How many potential locations have you looked at before us?
They don't have to, I was just wondering. There's, there's been a lot of no's, but getting down towards, the closer you get down to southeast Missouri, it seems to be, there seems to be more of a ingrained dislike for cannabis, I guess, if that makes sense, which is understandable, I mean, it's older farmer crowd, that's how they were raised, you know, so in this area, what are the closest communities that have done this or anything like that? I did one in Farmington on February fifteenth, and then there's some down in Lake Girardot, so we're kind of right between, middle line here, typically like, when we did the donations, what they average, I'm not a whole number to you, but what, you know, in the low end, so it's kinda no. Uh, it would be, I mean, it's, let's say the first one was a hundred and fifty people, or a hundred and fifty people that have like a head run to you there is, plus what I would do is have most, if not all, the vendors throw in something for like a raffle, that you guys could do on top, they won't charge you anything for it, and then you guys sell raffle tickets, or we'd sell raffle tickets for it, and that's these proceeds that goes to the area and all that as well. So it's just hard saying how much that would get up to, and would have forty people walk in.
Well, I don't, yeah, I was just thinking, if they're the average from these events.
I mean, with the, the first one, the first one, I'm telling you, it's about a hundred and fifty people, like five each, so that's about six hundred at least, and then plus raffles and all that stuff.
This is Alex Jordan, this is.
Hey.
Brian Frankhouse. And he's presenting, he's pitching having a festival at the park.
I'm aware of you.
Uh, yeah.
Talked to him here about you, yeah.
So I have a question also about, if we were to do something like this, what is, I know like, a lot of fairs and stuff that you go to, people go in, when they leave, how do they, if they wanna come back, what happens then?
Risk fans.
Okay, so you do have a risk fans with them, okay.
You got a security team as well, that oversees the CBD products and stuff, right?
Yep.
I have a, I have a security guys that are there, and I have probably one up near the door, or the entry, and then the other in the, in the campus area, and we have a place to park, so.
Alex, I know it came in late, but I don't know how long you've been talking. I'm a little bit stuck in traffic, but the bear went over, we spoke a long time about this, you and I, about you, and the overview, to me sounded good, I don't know where you are in your presentation, but you told, you've told everybody about what you do.
Yes.
Okay, and, so kind of my concerns about the thing is that, you know, we have a, we have a full board here, it's a solid board and bear, and we have a good community, but we are aware that it takes a community to put something like this on, and it also means that we do something like this, it has to be successful.
Right.
And there's a lot of really key components to make it successful, we don't have, we have, we have a zoning committee, and we have a community development committee, and the chair here is Kathy, and I think that, that should, after you make your presentation here, that needs to go to that committee, and we're gonna have to put together a group of people that'll work directly with you, because we're, we're for all of them and one mayor, and as much as we want to help as a community, we realize it takes a family to do this, and it does take a committee to spearhead it from our side, so that I'm not talking, the other men aren't talking, but it's going through one chairman of a committee that's setting this thing up, so I don't know how they're looking at putting together, but I think the overall concept of having an event is a great idea, and we've talked about that ourselves, putting together an event for this fall is a big part of our community development, that we could do something like that, but do we want to release that into someone's hands that we don't know, that we don't have an experience with, that we haven't seen anything with spin done, no, we, we want, we want to know everything about it, and, and we want it to go to the committee, so, as far as I'm concerned, Kathy's just now, and the last, last month or so, has become head of this planning and zoning committee, and Kathy, I said that if you wanted me or other people working with you, I'd be glad to do that, but that we need to start speaking, that, once we go forward, we need to be speaking to a committee member that knows everything, that then brings it to the board, so that we're all not bringing things to the board, we all can have questions for planning and zoning, and for the event, but we really need to, you know, focus on a contact, you know, a person that would know everything, so that we're not calling you, and you're not calling us, or calling mayor, and one thing we don't wanna do is have our mayor involved, because he's got other things to do, besides gonna run an event, and, and we all do, but I think we'd all support some type of effort like this, you know, it sounds interesting, but boy, there's so many more questions to ask.
Until this point, it's always, at least from my end, it's always been, I get permission to use the space, I, yeah, so it's always been thus far, I'm not against, you know, working together and figuring out details and all that stuff, but.
Yeah, the, I think the fact that we have an event here would reflect on the city of St. Mary, and we would be responsible in the end for everything, so, because it's our city and our town, we need to have our, our police and our fire people, and, you know, our, our, our folks involved as much as possible, so my feeling about it is, is that this, we talked about having something like this happen for us, and we did it, we take it through committee, and still, I think, I don't know everything about what you just talked about, or how much more do you wanna give, or how many more questions everyone wants to ask you, but I guess we can ask away here to make a presentation.
To bring you up to speed. Indicated that there was, there'd be separate areas, one for kids, kids play, and then, then, so not a scale. The park, idea, park in where the big hall, there it is, use the bathroom there, or you have court bodies, it would be divided between kind of arts and crafts and the cannabis booths, approximately one third of that seems to be dedicated to cannabis industry, so it's a vendor and art event, and up to thirty-three percent of the, of the local causes, he would handle advertising, the first, they would have approximately ten vendors or so, would be.
He had more than ten vendors there.
I'm gonna be aiming for right around forty or so. All right, good. And that there are about hundreds, usually the initial event, the maiden event is a little bit slower, with about a hundred and fifty people or so, and then it's, seems to grow up to be St. Clair, went from one fifty to three fifty, six hundred, and, and food trucks, like fired pizza, stuff like that, and anticipates that he would do something like this twice a year, and liability would be addressed with signing off waivers on the pizza thing, and people would be tattooed when they came in.
Well, would you think we would probably have a state license, liquor license?
They would have.
I can't remember.
Derek, are you, are you running this like a meeting where we recognize people who do this?
Yeah, I might, yeah.
Okay, are you gonna maybe nice Frank?
Not right now, we're talking with him, he's got the floor still, Frank will address you here, come.
Because generally these events, there's no alcohol involved, it's mixing the tea's never a good idea, so.
And speaking of which, do there, are there licenses, just like for alcohol, are there licenses for cannabis vendors too?
No, no, this, we can put this, it's a legal gray area, and what I mean by that is, there's over forty of these events in Missouri every weekend, the gray area is any adult over the age of eighteen, I can legally give an house of cannabis, hundred percent, where that has a problem. The gallant change is, they're not buying the cannabis, they're just paying for the time it took to grow it, electricity bill, that kind of thing, so it's working, unfortunately, it's the way around that right now, that's how I view it, and I've been doing it for a long time.
And do you, are you obligated to like, get snapshots of their driver's licenses or anything like that?
So it's just kinda free really.
Right, and then do you card people to make sure that they're in?
Yeah, when they're, if they're coming into that area, they'll be carded.
And then what happens if, kinda like with alcohol, if they're served and they haven't been carded?
They wouldn't get into that testing area without showing a card, and once they do, they have a specific wristband showing that they're over that age.
And that they put up your bags, right, check it by those things, that's what you know.
Or if you're more comfortable, it could be one of your bags checking those two.
Yeah, we could have him playing clothes, just checking it, on duty, you know, and he's got the scanner to scan the license and know on his phone, because there are gorgeous, I've seen some, I'm sure you have too.
There's some good ones.
Yeah, and you, they flip it over, it scans it, and it'll pop up their birthday, and they're good to go, they'll say X or green, so, because you pick alcohol, or you pick marijuana, you know, and that's what it does. And then that's what it does.
Okay, can I touch the floor real quick again?
Yes, sir.
So after I talked to the mayor about this, I think that I have a lot of questions and, and I think we have a lot of answers for what our questions would be. And this is a, this is a raw introduction, but I would suggest having some type of outline of an outline, all of what we've just talked about right now. And make a presentation to the board that's more conclusive, uh, with how it begins, how you see it working and how you see it ending. And that would include security, purchasing, you know, wristbands and all those things. This is not a good forum to have this conversation right now. I think that it's nice to have a presentation.
That's always...
An overview on all those things, but we have so many questions. And I would expect much more detail from you and your organization if we're gonna ever approve something like this. So, uh, and you know, it's a solid commitment. So, just while I have the floor, I'll end by saying, come back and see us again with a detailed outline about what I just talked about. And uh, day, time of day, schedule, what to expect, how you put it together. And then I think that at some point, uh, we'll get together with some questions that I'm sure that will be, will want answered. And then at some point approve the, of that, but take it through a committee, a right committee that, that you can work with. So that we don't have this going forward, that you're here to talk to four or five of us, that you're directed to a committee chair that will come and make that presentation for you to the board. This is, this is the man we found, the organization that's doing it. And this is, and they can answer those questions and we can better answer those questions for our citizens, for the city. So that would be my suggestion.
So basically, if I'm hearing you're right, you're wanting to take like a previous one you've already done and kind of break it down, how it, how it went down? So he knows how ours would be?
Exactly. How it's representative of us.
Like our business plan, right?
Kind of like one you've done before.
Right.
And Kathy, you can pull in your committee, form your committee, because we're just doing this. As a matter of fact, I mean Kathy's just taken this position last month.
Don't, 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 that's premature.
And we're gonna all want to be able to help her, but uh, all of us, uh, I think that we should have a point person. And that would be Kathy, on that, how do you feel about that?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Mr., any way that you can give us, usually don't want to, she won't go in for infanticity, can you give us some recog, uh, not recommendations, but some um...
Examples?
Of people that have contact, that say, hey, we, this children wants to come in? What is your thoughts, those kinds of things? Just kind of give us a feel of what you're like, um, and your business of, you know, through other, the people that you shoot for. So you need that.
Yeah, we have a space, uh, Wolf's Hill, Lake Wedding, that's under heard for that.
Just some, you know, just some um, citations, but...
References?
References, thank you. That's worth, just some references that we can call, say, hey, what do you think about this guy? You know, he's kind of one coming here, what do you think? What's he like?
I'd actually suggest, uh, a friend of mine that does the ones over toward St. Clair, he has one on the 4/19 of this year. Check that one out and let's see exactly what I'm trying to do here.
Have you worked with other city councils and other mayors and other aldermen?
Haven't needed to, no. Um, I've done, I've presented to quite a few boards. But those were mainly over in St. John's Eve and those like the KC halls, JC halls, that kind of places.
Well, I can tell you that even our churches that have uh, the fall dances and everything else we do here, has an entertainment committee on that, has a point person on that, has a committee that works with a person like yourself to bring you in. Usually it's more than just one person. And uh, so we know everything that's going down. Uh, and you know, at, at any event that we do and we just expect to have the same thing here. I think ultimately, it's a great idea, you know? This is...
Something I've pretty much always done so, and it's, so that would be a little bit of a change from where you go through committee and all that stuff. It's definitely fine with us. Generally how I've done it is, here's the land, I pay X amount to use the land. Then X amount of the proceeds goes to foundation of their choice. And that's pretty much where we, we go from there.
We would be, uh, talk to the mayor about, you know, uh, our areas where we wanna do work like that, you know? So that that could already be a, you know, a pre-arranged, okay, this is the area where we do this and this is the area where we do that. What area, what, what do you need in order to make an event like that work? And then we would know exactly, you know, all the way down from like a schematic, a map that shows what, what's going down. And um, so, yeah, I guess a really good beginning here to find things out. Can't say we're gonna prove it.
We need more information. And that's fair, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you have anything else, closing, anything you want to say?
I, I hope we uh, hope we can get some, some money out of this area. So hopefully we can make it work and get this area going and all that and a lot of local vendors over and, and get everybody in the area back up. So there's, especially in St. John's Eve too, it's, there's schools that are failing, there's, I mean, like the Dell School District is St. Joseph. The autism center needs money, food bank needs money, food pantry needs money, it's like everybody, like, it's everybody down here. So it's like trying to, yeah, it's events that are different than what's normal down here, but it also brings a whole different group of people, so.
Kathy, would you like to, like, give him a new phone number for contacts, they want you as the mayor next time? Set up a meeting, uh, you know, for what we need to do.
Alright, now.
He said this, the May 31st is when that would be that most... That, that's the one I'm wanting to do next. And helping with uh, all the owners or landowner over in, uh, Wooddale tomorrow. And uh, to see what he has available. That would be doing the other one that I want to schedule right now, meet with the help that he's... So compare to everybody's land, how's our setup land and platform for you?
Yours would work great.
Compared to everybody else's, I'm just comparing what you're doing and everybody's. The, the perk to yours is you have multiple power sources. And I wouldn't have to run about 300 foot extension cord. So, that, that was a big plus right there. Uh, is there parking in the room and then just... There's, there's a couple spots that are a little less parking than I would like to have. But uh, it's a, could make it work if needed to, type of thing. They own back all the way back to that wood line. Yeah. So we got plenty, you know? So, I didn't know, what was St. John's reservations when you approached your board or whichever committee you had, like the 16th year? It was the, the KC halls and the JC hall and the Elks Lodge, I thought all their committees and all that. And uh, those one or two guys that, one of them even said to me that cannabis legalization was the worst thing happened in America since slavery. I was like, that's a pretty strong stance, but okay. Put a 75 cents draft on Tuesday, like uh...
Right. Originally slavery wasn't, uh, was, uh, stopped. It wasn't...
Right.
I know, but it like, since when?
Yeah, I was just like...
So if there's...
The legislation was to remove slavery, not to initiate it.
There's still a lot of...
So folks that were, were brought up.
So if it's worse than stopping slavery, then I don't know what that means.
I think you meant active slavery, not stopping.
So what you were basically looking for is that they need to hold your event.
Yeah.
Okay? And we're a community looking at hosting an event. And that's the way you need to look at it going forward.
Right.
And uh, I think, you know, that's a good start.
Yeah. And you're local too?
Yep.
So it's not like it's like, like that carnival? A little carny?
Great, moving right along.
Alright, talk about carny.
Do you have a business card with you or a...
Yeah, if you do, like one...
I'll pass that to your paper maker so she can get it in front of minutes.
Right in the car, I'm sorry.
If Deborah's good at this.
It's like I brought them, I put them in the, yeah, in the middle part of the car. Yeah, on the passenger side. You want my card? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I appreciate you coming.
Nice to meet you, Alex.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to meet you.
Hey, Alex.
Good to meet you. We'll be talking soon. That's the plan, let's see how it goes and um, like I said, like they requested to get a business proposal up and... Get everything on paper pretty much, yeah.
A business plan, but yeah.
Once we hit that and once the wheels are rolling, you know?
You're good to go? Great. Moving right along.
That's a good idea.
I feel something.
You have something going? Um, Frank, do you wanna borrow any of that?
Yeah, I was, I remember twenty, twenty-five years ago, the Catholic Church wanted to have, wait a minute, oh, hang on. The Catholic Church wanted to have a, get together where people could get drinks and dance and whatever. And then they had to get a liquor license. And I don't know if it was from the state or the city or wherever, but they were worried about canceling it because they didn't have a liquor license. And then they got one and I know Bader's Place and CMA have to have a liquor's license to operate in St. Mary. And if, that would be different for your situation or...
No, Frank, uh, we, uh, if it went through the committee, we'd already discussed the fact that we need a picnic license for St. Mary. And that would allow us a date in order to have that picnic and have a license for that day. And we'd have to apply for it to the city.
And he also said no alcohol is allowed, so he don't have, he won't have to have a liquor's license.
I thought he was distributing liquor.
No, no.
Moving on.
Alright.
That's a good one, thank you. Alright. I mentioned this, meter reader, appointment by the board. It's just what we talked about last meeting. And which, when you want to take a place and your rate of compensation, we need to really figure that out. Two T's, so it's that. And also put Doc, Dr. Dido, it's made to put a um, job description in here somewhere.
I saw it, I saw it and I read it and I was surprised. Surprised, because there's a lot of stuff in there and uh, my understanding was you just run around with one of those little ones. And for my discussion with you, the uh, there are only a couple meters that require opening with a exciting event.
And?
Ten or fifteen, I don't know.
Fifteen?
Ten or fifteen.
Ten or fifteen. And so that would be about 100, that would go, that would be pretty straightforward.
Um, we have a hundred and...
Sixty-two.
Oh, really? I thought we had a hundred and eleven.
We gained some.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so 115?
Most of them are...
Would be clean reads?
But I have a list, I kind of have it in mind, I have what I want to use.
Excuse me, so for the conventional meeting, you just tap the top of the thing, there's a magnet, there's a tag or whatever.
And you press the button on the down and it sends it to the tab.
Right. And my uh, when Brian first addressed this, he said he hired, when he was in Albany, before he hired someone. That was uh, that just read meters once a month and some woman that drove around and... I didn't hire her, she was already employed here. Oh, okay. So you had one person doing it and uh, it didn't sound like uh, there were all these additional uh, issues related to uh, reading the meter. So, uh, that's what I'm asking is, how simple is this job? Is it just read the meters, turn the report to you?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. And it's a lot easier now that it wasn't those things because we have the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so good. And uh, out of all these things you've listed, uh, I guess I would run ahead of discussion, you know, with you, Mr. Mayor, uh, or Frank or April about how we list it. I mean, I know all these things occur, but what's the likelihood that...
It's a regular meter reader?
Yeah. I thought we're just getting a meter reader to read the stuff and then ban the stuff.
This is just a basic one off of what a template, I'm zero water says for meter reading. As if you had like a person did all the time, or it's probably short, you know, small.
Yeah, but in our town, in our borough city, uh, it's basically...
Reading, but yes, you can adjust this as needed, but I put all of what was on there, on there. So you could see for yourself and then adjust it as you, you know?
Okay. So I have a person who's willing to do this, as I mentioned before, and I had another conversation uh, with that person this week. And uh, uh, and it looks like it's pretty light on it, you know, the stars of the lights are less, you know? But I would want to go over these duties, which you furthered before, I kind of they spoke with that individual and confirmed it.
Now, now the one on top is training period, I did put that in there, because there is a training period. I mean, you would have to learn where every meter is at, which one, you know, so...
Of course.
You know, so. And just basic physical capabilities, walking, my favorite walk. Or drive for extended periods of time during the day, various terrains, I mean...
Yeah, this person has arms and legs and can walk and talk.
If it's water, if it's hot, it's cold, it rains, I mean, it says 80% of your work in the day is just reading meters. And then they, with the lawn, so I mean, that's what I calculated.
Okay. Good.
So we're gonna move on, um, compensation wise, are we gonna hold off on that again or...
I guess instead say, uh, well, you guys had thrown out some figures earlier, so that's what I was going by. And I don't know if that's a matter, since it's a uh, payment thing, dealing with a new employee that's not named here. Uh, if, if that's a process issue, so it may become a personnel issue.
And then, maybe we can call them and see what they think.
I didn't say it was them.
Or her, or you, or a unicorn, I don't know. So, um, we can definitely determine that further close for compensation and that kind of, I mean, for hiring. So.
But, so, so this is something that uh, aldermen do those kind of spearheads in so that I'm out of it and everybody else is. And you can handle the problem orientation compensation. You have to ask them it for help as far as finding, figuring things out.
Yeah.
This could be broken down into bullet points, it's really a lot shorter, like you're saying, you know?
This specific, I mean, it hasn't lifted off of a state thing, so for our uh, borough city, you know, we probably have similar needs.
The uh, what we talked about the last meeting was sort of four issues. And one was the timing of the work, that needs to be done. The work itself, uh, the report, where it goes and when it's due. And the compensation package, which would encourage, you know, which would, you know, we've got compensation insurance in case somebody gets hurt. We've got uh, a salary that some of these paid, you know, when, when would they be paid, those types of things? That's what the employee's gonna ask, you know? Okay, when do I work, you know, what do I do, when do I get paid and where do I have to the report, you know?
Yeah, my, the way the, this job description was described to me is it's one day a month to, you know, do the readings. If there's a climate weather, like uh, snow or thunderstorm or something, then it'd probably be put off for the day. And uh, and it's read the meters and turn the data to you. And uh, and then the pay would be however we would normally pay anyone else, whether it be monthly or, I don't know, probably if it, if it's based on what you're... What are we?
Um, well, if he's only, if he was on contract, I'd give him monthly, I mean, I can pay him, you know?
Everything is consolidated.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was...
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Next. Let me check there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a, errors on there. So, let's get past that. Um, did, did you ever do like the water kinda?
I do, um, where it says, it says actual reports, um...
Where's that, yeah. Oh, man.
Yeah. Which I mean, unfortunately, they haven't given us a point first. So I can't really give you a, the exact. But I have more on there if, you know, like, say, you know, one or four here. It's a little.
What's your idea?
One or two.
All right, so anybody? Anybody really did that?
Nobody's really out right now.
Oh, I.
Is this on the bills?
You're on it. Yeah.
I know, I'm on there. Mine, I wa, so I mailed mine out to see how long it took to mail the gift back with my income survey. But they got mine, which was, you know, very long after we mailed them. I mailed it out. And what's the way to my income survey and my check?
Yeah, I opened, I, I guess I got, I have two mailing addresses. So I opened the four seventy-six one I found in, in there this morning. They pay online anyway, but the income survey will get done this week.
So your hyphen's positive or negative?
They have a credit.
Oh, except maybe, yeah.
That's off the system all of a sudden. So everything that's in the hyphen is a credit for their account.
Okay. And I did.
So like, um, down here on one seventeen?
Wait, hyphen or parentheses?
The parentheses, sorry. On the very first page, the very bottom line. Kathy, I'm gonna. Anything in the parentheses, they have a credit on there.
Oh. And, um, I guess.
I know the app will be here. So close.
Did we recruit quite a bit of?
Yes, I only have two that I've not been paid for.
Yeah, that's great. Well done.
Good job, you guys.
Moving along.
You got it. Looking forward. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, wait.
Hurry. Adam, what was it? My large, very large, but.
Yeah, there was a large amount there.
All right, and whenever we read meters next to sixteen?
Um, anyway, seventy, eighteen.
Okay.
On that, so.
So any, anybody have any questions on there? Seems like we're doing more proactively good on anything like that.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
All right.
Good.
Moving on. Approval of the Purple Wave list, option items and sell such items. I do this every time. Alderman Doudal, Alderman Cerven. Know that anytime I renew or per se contracts with them, that costs us nothing. Um, it's just our auction agreement and just a blank sheet of what we have that we're gonna be listing online for sale. So no different than last time.
I know, that's great. We've had a nice, uh, business arrangement with them. They take good care of us and it's, uh, it's clear off the yard quite good, so it's great.
They'll be here next Tuesday, you know, videos and pictures and everything. And then it's gonna be live.
When will they go live with them?
Um, soon as, uh, he starts taking pictures and sends it upload. Since we got internet now, the plan now. Before, he had to upload it from an office. Now we have internet. Soon as he starts, it gets to home office and it'll straight online, so.
When's, is there an auction closing fee?
Uh, I guess as soon as he gets finished.
And closes?
Yeah, from his district, I think. It's usually twenty-four or twenty-six days.
Okay.
So.
And what, you said he'll get Tuesday?
Yeah, it'll be here Tuesday.
Long are you hoping to harvest from this, uh, auction?
The most I can get. I mean, that's, it's our town. I mean, the last time I worked and worked and worked straight night, three, three, we tried again. If we would have probably had more time and more, I guess, ability to clean things up, I think we would have got at least fifteen thousand, ten, fifteen.
Pretty well. We got through, uh, we sold a tractor, a fire truck.
Um, well, uh, uh. I know. Um, yeah, we sold several items. So we split, I split it up into half lots. So we sold the old dump truck that's been down there forever. It used to be a highway one. Then I got a good money. Our old John here brought in fifteen thousand dollars. That was from two thousand and four, yeah. So altogether, just some stuff we had down there that's been sitting for years. The weeds growing up in it, we brought in thirty-five thousand dollars in excess months.
We talked. We took a tractor. It's good, it's good, dude.
Money to bank?
Yeah.
Instead of the bird.
Yeah. So I don't be adding any questions with those still on here.
It looks good.
Oh, I would say I was notified by then. Um, any office equipment or any excess stuff we have around here? That's, you know, just not being used. This is the last year they'll be taking it. Say like boat to the chairs or in, in there, there's just bunch of stuff or over here. Printers, anything like that. Handheld radios. This is the last year they'll be taking lots on that stuff. And they don't be doing it no more. They'll just mainly focus on the bigger items like this.
Yeah, and I heard into that, uh, we were back there and I've been discussing, uh, out of probably my pocket or his pocket or both of us will get a conference table for here. It's usually on Facebook Marketplace, it's about a hundred bucks or something.
Yeah.
There's a spring for that. And, uh, that way it kind of upgraded the occurrence of City Hall a little bit.
Better chairs.
Yeah. Okay, they're kind of, so it's not gonna cost the city now. So unless you're Jack, we'll do that. All right. Uh, is there anything in the back storage? Looking at this. This rare, the police, five bars, the police bar, push bars. There's some equipment. I don't know if Frank's gonna keep them old reels? Or what do you wanna do with them?
I have to look at them again. I think that's too much. I'm not saying.
Which one? The little forty-one?
Yeah, I think, no. The one we got for day three, 'cause I got, uh, reels that they gave me here. I have to look at it.
All right, we'll look it down.
I think it's more or whatever, you know, if it can go, I'll just, we'll.
Cause I'm getting a bunch of pallets so we can do the lots. I have a lot of lots so we can do.
Just have them to go and.
And I'll let Adam know. I mean, it could be a more probably.
Cause like the old playground equipment Frank you painted years ago and they sat back here. It's pretty much, um, I'm gonna put that up in there if you don't care. Cause it's been sitting here for, how long have they been back here?
Probably about six, seven years.
So. And then we won't be able to remove that, so we might as well.
Why is it up there or is it still like out in the grassy area?
I painted that and everything and I'm supposed to go to the park. And I bought, uh, garden tash to make the playground area. And it just like lived flat upon it. I mean, nobody ever said it'd get your day or fall down, so.
Yeah, I mean, like that little grassy area in front of the, I mean, we talked about having that as a park earlier, but that would be a good place to have it.
I mean, first one was, a lot of that jungle gear and stuff like that, they're outdated. Kids don't play with that anymore. A lot of these, like, just recently, we got a, uh, playground set that we got, which, you know, handicap accessible. So that's for handicap kids too. So, I mean, that's, that's the thing, I mean, it's, I don't even, like, we up in our parks, we don't even see, we'll buy a flag on there anymore.
Yeah. But it's kind of, I what, I mean, uh, you guys have kids and stuff like, what works? The major concentration of kids in town, are they fairly distributed all over?
Huh? Video games?
Yeah. I think they are fifteens.
Yeah.
So. So I don't know about the issue, but then, um, like I said, there's some old printers or some more, some in there. Copy machines, some there for works and I was just putting a lot on pallets. I have some printers and stuff I can put in there.
The other thing to do is I got some stuff up there to fire it up that we can probably, you can put in there. Stuff that was on the ground or anything, I can't sell out the purple wave like that. On certain, like, certain stuff we got from certain grants, can't do that. You gotta, we'll get to it for a minute. I think I got some stuff up there.
Do you have any, like, old radios on the rent? Cause he said radios last year.
I mean, I got old radios, but I don't know what they're in the trash.
Well, they don't know that. They may, there's companies that find rebuilding.
Well, I think, yeah.
So I don't know about that. I mean, too much on the trash.
I mean, everybody's starting to go to the, you know, the digital. I mean, not less of rebuilding, putting them in the digital, but it's just, I mean.
There's something to go through if you guys got excess stuff, but this is the last year except trucks. Main ticket items, so.
The bigger items?
Yeah, the bigger items because it's getting to the point of people are just like piling crap on, you know, just pile on.
Great, all right, moving on.
Oh, man, that's good. All right. Update on the price replacement for the rotor bearing? Did, uh, for the, uh, damage to it on the rotor for the plant?
Are you looking at?
Oh, okay. Are we gonna roll with that? Like it's.
So, I mean, everything on the rotor down there, kind of the past couple days, you looked at it. I mean, the, I mean, the, on the temperatures, I mean, they're giving me a higher reading than, uh, but we're still not up there as high as we was. So the north rotor is, uh, older bearings. And, uh, we haven't had no trouble with them. I mean, only them bearings, cause they're working all the time. I mean, you know, it's about, you know, three to five year, you know, um, on their life span. Maybe if the property agrees, but they've been in there since, I think, two thousand and fourteen. When they're, when they're, um, but, uh, everything's working on it good. I mean, uh, I greased it up really good. When it did that, had, had no issues with it now. But it's just, uh, if we do have to replace it, it's gonna probably be, I think it was about a couple of six hundred for the bearing. Anyways, I'm, uh, with it being a tail trap bearing like that, if, if, um, uh, it does go out, we won't have to pay the cost of, uh, like, being a vendor or anybody coming there to do it. Um, cause I can actually do it myself on that tail end bearing. Normally it's the one that's the gearbox, cause you gotta have a crane to pull the gearbox off and stuff and align. Then there, you know, you can just actually put them up and do what you need to do. It takes two people to do. I mean, it's, it'd be done, you know, a full day to work. But right now, we don't need to worry about it. It ain't doing no squalling on me, it ain't heating up like it was. We just keep an eye on it. Uh, we got it for sure.
But it did take the grease.
Huh?
It did take the grease.
Yeah, it did take the grease.
Yeah.
And we're gonna muck. So, I mean, it, it cooled back down what it was. At the end of the day, whenever I'm down there, uh, come in, I was doing some wash down and stuff on it. Cleaning, cleaning the effluent box and stuff to dump and all that. And I sprayed water out, it actually cooked the egg off of it, so I was like. Anyways, but I shut it down. We evaluated it, didn't see no bearings leaking out or anything. Pump, almost Friday.
Or the bearing score or anything like that that you could tell or fitted or?
There wasn't no lattiness to it. So I think a cottage pump, uh, the races wasn't charred or anything. So, um, uh, I think a cottage pump, uh, I did pump a lot of grease into it. To, um, basically, uh, you can, down there, you can actually pump the grease in and it will come out of. Uh, I actually pumped a whole tube of grease in it to make sure it coated everything in it, wiped all the grease out. And then I'm, uh, started it up. We let it run for an hour. At least, like, I was down there, started checking the temp one and I was back down to where we should be.
I'll leave you talking about, I'll leave you talking about.
Okay, so the update is twenty-six hundred dollars for the replacement of that part if we want to go that direction, right?
If it does fully go out. But we're not there. We're not there. We want it just to bring it to everyone's attention.
Yeah.
Because we didn't always want to take grease. I was, yeah, it's been a while.
Basically, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna have a, um, something thrown that shit. And it was like what happened, so.
But the reason there was no grease in it was because there was no grease in it. Meaning someone did not put grease in it.
Well, there was grease in it. It was, I put more grease in it to coat the bearing and saw it better. Technically, when you grease in, it's only supposed to take about three to four pumps in it. Anyway, because, but anyways, with it getting hot, it melted the grease out of probably. I mean, the race, like I said, they didn't, weren't charred or anything. I mean, I can't, I mean, it's just a point of, I know a little bit more about that bearing than anybody. I mean, I didn't do it where it is.
Dry or dry?
It was, it was, I mean, dry, but I can say that if it got that hot, it pushed, melted the grease out of it. So.
So where the, what do you have there? Tim, how many tubes would we go to? Three?
Yeah, it's left thirty.
Three? To do the whole plant? And we have a check sheet down there for greasing, down, yeah. That's the thing.
And that's not maintained?
What did I wrote my name? Well, I just wrote down the other day, it's been greased.
But before that, I was, was my entry in that.
Um, September, my name.
So that's a little bit of a lag time for the.
I think it's been greased in between there, I don't know.
It's been greased.
Sure, yes.
But, you know, um, well, maybe, well.
Yeah. So those need to be maintained for obvious reasons. Okey dokey.
All right. All right. So Miss Shannon Cox, her very villa she's selling. Uh, since, did you check on that about if we put everything? She's, we've done the paper, she's been sent to the board.
Where's that?
That, the lighted house down here that's falling in.
On eight eighty-third, that green house.
It's got like?
Couple houses down from.
Oh, six foot of water in the basement. So, um, she, she messaged me online. It wasn't very, uh, personal, well, acting like she's, uh, some lord, but I'm not gonna say anything on that.
There's no one living in it, right?
No, it's, it's abandoned, it's uninhabitable, and it's a health and safety issue and it's been.
It's got the fallen, so these, they're basically, it needs to be demolished.
Yeah.
It's a, a dangerous building.
And we, yeah. And then, so we, she's been trying, summons the front of the board that comes, clean it, clean it up and do all that. She has not done that, she refused. She messaged me the other night mad cause I called her out on it, you know? She's selling these lots around here that, yeah, we have a lien on. But she's not paying the lease. But she's selling, uh, suspecting people and taking their money around.
Should have been counted or?
No, she's catching around on. And, you know, and the thing is, she says she's legitimate, but she only accepts cash, money order, or those little gift cards from Walgreens.
Did you contact the state attorney general for fraud?
Yeah, every county's got something going on with her, right? With that business and her other DBAs.
She's all the way, got stuff pending in Illinois. It's that, like, northern Illinois type.
So could we turn her over to the county or something like that or?
She called the county, I had her called, April called the county. You know, and they really didn't know much, but then I got to looking on there. We have an ordinance, if it becomes a nuisance or blighted property, we tear it down. We need to set bids and if it, anytime I, when I called the abstract office under that after so long, we can put it on the courthouse square with our lien on it. And they can sell it for what we. And they can sell it for what we can polish it for, for super cost, if it goes higher, we get more money, if not, be done. So, but at least that's gone, but it has to be used in a manner of not, not so much redevelopment, but cleaning it up, maintaining, looking nice, you know, where it doesn't look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to do a proposal, and bids, we already got two that were given to me, but to be fair, I think we need to put just one cycle in the paper. Just so we can't say there's no biased opinions.
Correct.
And then get this tore down and cleaned up and called out.
This solicitation of bids, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
I agree with that.
So, we'll have to, if you wanted to make a motion on that and agree on that, if you're.
I would make a motion to move forward on taking measures to, uh, list, uh, the aforementioned property for, uh, demo, mobile demolition. Disposition of really, um, associated with it.
One second.
All right. No favors, sorry. Anybody opposed? All right, so we'll do one week, or you want to do two weeks? Let's just do one week, we already got two bids, we don't, we don't need more than that.
Well.
There's one more.
The usual thing is free, so if you can get it, great, uh, and if you made the efforts, you know, to list it, it's fine, if you know, for reports, and, you know. Good stuff flies, but, uh, yeah.
Remind me to the city attorney. So, um, yeah, we'll just do the legal, like I said. The other two bids, we'll, we'll just accept, I guess, they're not gonna change, they're gonna be the same. So, but we can't talk about them right now, so all bids are together, if there's a bid. Other than that, we'll get rid of that, but we don't have to start doing that, so a lot of these blighted houses, if they refuse to do so, and then there's a way we can prevent it, or if we need that area to go through the attorney to get to that land and clean it up, so.
Okay.
All right. Um, and that's for you to buy our rent property.
We only have three.
We have three people.
Corolla and Leal Wyatt, they have insurance, they paid for their lien this year. Um, the next one, um, he hasn't paid for it yet. Um, is Eric Hollis, and the other one is just a few doors down, um, what is their name? No. What is their name that loves emergency pops?
He has three, they have three.
Yeah, Lowman's, and they have, they have insurance.
Lowman's the ones that do a very good job.
Yeah, they keep.
They do a very good job.
My question on these, I think if they're breaking the law on these bio properties, or they're creating a substantial risk to the city, where we're looking at, you know, possible being sued, I don't think they should be allowed to rent it, that's my opinion.
Rented?
Like leased.
Yeah, they leased it out for a year.
And they should provide insurance, even though they do.
Stuff there? What are they rented for?
Well, one individual thinks it's okay for three children on ATV with no helmets riding through. And then if one gets hurt with a broken neck, I'm sure they're gonna go after everybody, they want to.
Yeah, that's unknown, but on their own property, I guess, it would be allowed.
Yeah, it is on your own property, that's city property.
But I mean, but if he leases it, it's kind of.
We still have laws against that, yeah, because it's, because it's still state, we make the rules on our property.
Yeah, and then while that particular piece of ground is, you know, has bad wet spots in it, so it could have been bottom off, you know, tires going amok and flip you pretty easily and stuff, so I would issue them a letter stating, um, you know, no more helmets, period.
That's under the label.
And then if it's, uh, if, if it's still, if it's still ignored, then those are leased, I guess, would be because they're ignoring, uh, proof of the city or, um, city, uh, property.
That's not different than anybody else, I mean, it's like that one lady died in Perryville, you know? She wrecked, and they were drinking on their own property, but the passenger family stayed at his property. Hey, Rose.
Yeah, I'm, I can't get used to that. Where, doesn't matter where it's at.
You can just say wherever's comfortable for you, Rose, you know? Whatever you want, the chairs, I mean.
Well, so.
All right. And they helped me guys, oh.
Uh, I, uh, received an order of replacements by industries for months that have flowed out, you know, to put them off, and since we had some rains, and, uh, I'd like to get some in, you know, this weekend.
Good job, man. How many did you get?
Fifty.
I paid my debt.
Are we down to number seven?
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Eric, that before, real quick?
Yes.
Cause I want to apologize to everybody for being late tonight, because it wasn't in my plan, I, last week, was our meeting at six thirty last week?
It was.
And so I'm home at six o'clock, I'm waiting for six thirty, cause last week I came at six, I sat up there with everybody there, so I went and got gas, I went home, and so I'm sitting, so it wasn't deliberate, and I won't do it again, but I.
Oh.
I couldn't pull that on me.
I was right there with you.
I was like waiting here too.
So, Eric, excuse me.
Oh, you're, um, he showed up, I mean.
It happens.
I wanted to dovetail on that, because I came in late and this gentleman, Alex, is here.
Oh, man. I'm sorry, that's, that's on my part, but.
And I've been here at six o'clock, I wasn't addressed Alex earlier, but I, I just want to say this, that I know that he had an important presentation to make to us as a board, but I thought that personally and professionally, for our committee here, was premature. That, uh, because there's too much loose ends and too many questions, and that, that took about a half hour, forty five minutes away from our board meeting, just to talk to this guy about something, when we could have had him and condensed that presentation, and had questions for him already listed in our, in our books to ask him. And we could have gotten our, our questions answered, and just I want to say going forward, um, if we could direct these types of things to the proper committee before we get in front of all of us here, we might be able to be more proficient in getting things done, I mean, he did answer the questions in the end, but forty five minutes later. And we could have done it in fifteen, so, uh, but fortunately, for me, I had that long conversation with you, and you do a great job keeping us all informed of what's going on. I'm running late, I'm half hour late here, and he's still talking, so, but, uh, so I just want to say that I didn't need to, I wanted to make sure that I follow up with this. If you're going to give us a committee assignment, if you're going to ask April and I to work together to do something, put a survey out, or whatever it is, do that, let us go away and do it, and let us come back and report on it. And so there's not a lot of questions asked during that period of time, if we have somebody here that's working with streets or working with plumbing, then we need to have those questions answered before they get here, so we're not in a long conversation for forty five minutes talking about what broke, because we need to report why that fixed. And, uh, so, I, and I know that Kathy, I put you kind of in the spot about this thing with, with, with your new chair, and I'd be glad to help you, I'm sure any of us would, but had you had an opportunity to know this guy ahead of time, um, and we could have met with him, who had, now we have to begin, yeah.
What was wrong with me, he wanted to be face to face instead of like a phone or zoom.
Yeah.
This was just, and, and, yes, informal.
And I, and I'm thinking that, you know, Robert's Rules of Decorum requires us to be recognized on the floor, to have a message and move on. And I'd like to see us try to get closer to doing that going forward, I mean, if we're gonna get things done, you know, two hour meetings or three hour meetings.
Well, I believe in transparency, and I believe that people have the right to debate and conceal. And as a chair, I recognize that, but I also recognize if we do have disagreements, we should mediate them, so that's what I feel on that.
Yeah, um, I think in, in all clarity, um, I'm saying that let's bring more business that's finished to the board to approve or disapprove. And, uh, and not debate the issue, getting the board, if we can, going forward, because it takes up too much of our time, it's, it's just the way I feel, I don't expect all of y'all to feel that way. But, um, I like this guy, Alex, I would have liked to talk to him more, I would have liked to have had a chance to have questions listed, to be able to ask him, and, you know, and I.
Oh, yeah, so I'm the one invited in here since we had a cancellation on that from a previous, uh, line, so.
We can slap you down.
You know, I'm just saying, I wanted him to meet the board, so you guys can get a feeling and take your own consensus and opinion, because I believe you all have a right to speak on that. Whether Rosenberg, Robert's Rules and that, I understand, but we have plenty of unfinished business, if you look behind it, there's plenty of it. And let me tell you, so, if we were gonna be like that and push fourteen minutes like the last administration, I'm not gonna run like that, sorry.
I'm just saying that I would have liked to have some questions for this.
Oh, I know.
Oh, we had questions, we did, we ignored.
I, I didn't know it was coming, he wasn't on the agenda, and so he came to speak to us, and, um, yeah. So, we'll, we'll, we'll have another meeting with him, and we'll, and we'll.
It'll be formal at that point.
So let's, the B B B by guns, be by guns.
This is something, we could be a little more organized with it.
So Kathy, I guess, will, will you be able to form a committee and be able to be in touch with this guy and get that going, and just report back to the board and the chair?
Yeah.
Per Rosenberg, roll the board. Yes, sir, you're next, would you like to speak?
Uh, no, I'm ready to move on.
Okay. All right. Departmental reports, uh, emergency management, April.
Um, just let you guys know that we are expecting some significant weather, um, coming Friday. Uh, we're in the risk for, what, is it four? Low four, cutting what floor? Level four, um, so just kind of be on the watch out and be prepared, kind of keep your, anything else?
They were saying they're gonna have nocturnal ones. Well, that's gotta be so to die, move your down, you got another one down.
All right, then.
Anybody, you got anything else?
Main thing, oh, regarding that, I would just mention trees, I guess, is good as cancer, you know, so, bringing takes care, you take care of that stuff a lot. Uh, I, like tomorrow morning, like, uh, chainsaws seem to be sharpened.
That's a great idea.
All right, awesome.
All right, police department, doctors, and do that.
Uh, yes, so, uh, Tyler, you sent me a report, uh, you had a pretty busy, uh, month, including the busy last night. So, for those of you that don't know, there's a, a significant issue, uh, last night, where, uh, some, uh, an individual, uh, in Perry County uh, was threatening someone in our community and, uh, was headed this way, and Tyler was able to head him off, and, uh, had a hundred thirty mile an hour chase to town. And they ended up in St. Genevieve, where he was shot, and, well, he hurt himself, uh, but he would, you know, he was heading here to, uh, he's threatening to kill someone. So, uh, thank you, Tyler, for your service, and I think you're recommended for heading that off, and for putting yourself at arms' length to get that guy out of town.
Thank you.
Um, did you have any other information?
Yeah, I have the report pulled up here, oh, but you can go over it, you just.
Uh, yeah, just, for February, had ninety seven total calls for service. A lot of it was traffic stops, I've been kind of cracking out on speeding through town, and it's been a pretty big issue. Lots of speeds in excess of fifty miles per hour, so not tuning in on those.
Good.
Couple women's violations, basically all we got.
And then you had a busy day yesterday, I think, with the certifications too, right?
Oh, yeah, including, uh, up to the chase, that chase was probably the last bid one.
Yeah, I think you had ninety, ninety five calls for service as well.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah. And then, um, I also want to stress, cause you'll, you'll be checking, so if you have a side by side, and you're driving on the streets, please come to City Hall or work something out, they get your sticker. Because you do your thing, don't even worry about warrants, they already know, it's been an ongoing thing. And if they can't, we'll just address it a different way. I'm not against them, I like them, my best stolen, have been, whatever, but, I mean, there's people out of town that buy our stickers, and there's people in town that don't even do it. And what kind of crap does that show you? Lack of.
It's costly.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Rose.
You're welcome.
So, I just want to stress that, but I don't know what, we got tech, like vehicle tags here to do at the end of this month, everything? So pretty much, uh, animals included.
Animals, cars, pictures.
Animals, cars, stickers, animals are now gonna be, there's gonna be some repercussions on animals, cause these ones have been, kids have been.
I have a question, you know, how does that work when they come down, how do you log that, what kind of information do you use?
Um, I have tags, they each have a tag number, and then I write down, like, if it was like a cat or a dog, and then I write down what it is and what color it is.
Okay, so do you have, like, who it belongs to, like that number, you have, so that, that owner and all that, so, okay, I'm just kind of curious, so.
Because of those tags, we found a cat in St. Gene one year.
Really?
Yes.
So, yeah. Are the tags that you use, are they for the previous year, or are they for like twenty five?
For this year.
This year, twenty five.
They change each year.
So tomorrow, with the storms on the.
What time is it supposed to start?
Start, we'll start around eight.
Eight and nine?
Seven to eight, well, they're supposed to, so their prediction is at eight, two AM and one, but if the atmosphere are right, we're gonna get it sooner. And, which I can talk that down to fire, but that's a lot of relief stuff.
So during that period of time, does the fire station and police department kind of keep their eye out during that emergency time?
I always did, I went back out, and then I know Frank's station.
Yeah, but maybe like pretty often, group tasks for all the events that you're supposed to.
The other thing with the side by sides too, is, you know, everybody should buy their stickers on it, um, but there is big events that come through town here, like for poker rounds and stuff like that.
Those are.
I know we re-exempt them, you know, they, I mean, there is some in the roof that's got the tags, you know, but.
They're not from secondary.
Yeah, they're not from secondary.
But they all go to like, to the event, and just the event only then?
Yeah, I know, I know, last year, we had on an event that I went on, um, there was over five thousand passers, and we were stopping at certain places, and we got stopped, and the city cops, kind of, me, anyways, people were threatening to ride us, everybody was on a bike to take it, and I was like, we're having a benefit, right, for a cancer patient.
Benefit's different, I've always, benefit's always been exempt from that, it's like. It's like, uh, Marzito's benefit.
I see, yeah, the, the Down syndrome.
Yeah, well, that one, that one there's a big one. There's a lot of bikes in that one too.
They get, they, on that one, they give each person, or they, each year they have it, they have a different color, like zip tie. And they're supposed to put it on that bike. So they know, hey, this is for, everybody around knows that. This tie means it's for this cherry, so.
Cherry's always an example, but, you know, cherries aren't right.
But if you're all for pleasure and riding around.
I mean, you might as well pay or, or you can just pay the set value like St. Jen makes. Everybody do, but now they're mad cause they pay more.
I was talking about saying stickers on my twenty-five dollars for a year.
So, I mean, it helps locate it, maybe. So, all right, anything else? Oh, Rose, did you have a question for Katie and this?
How often do you actually go up and down Cemetery Road?
Oh, I sure did it. I mean, down on patrol.
Cause there's been kids over there trying to break into the house and I still, still.
Okay.
Do you have a, do you have your phone that call that, your phone will still call now, one of them?
Oh, I have service. It's not yet.
Do you give them a description of the number? Cause they're so close to you, you can probably get a snapshot of it.
It's usually at night and I can't see that far from my porch. And right now it's not a good idea for me to walk down in my front yard. They've got puppies that does most. Another one is a good one. I don't even know how often you do it.
Do they come in from your street or from behind? Can you tell?
There've been a couple times where there wasn't a vehicle there.
There wasn't?
No. Nope.
If you wanna talk after the meeting, I can get some more info from you.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you can take it though, you know.
I'm not, I got myself, so.
All right. Officer Bergman to the fire department.
Frankie, we do have to speak on that, please.
Uh, so anyway, we've had ten calls. We've had seven medical calls, one brush fire and two mutual aid calls. One for St. Jen and we're prepared to go. The other thing is, the storm is moving in, like April says, level four now that they're predicting. It wasn't level three yesterday, but with the National Weather Service, it is a level four. Uh, I do know previously, not scaring nobody, but whenever we had a tornado lifetime, it was a level four. Anyways, um, so the main area that, looking on radar and I'm, uh, pulled by Mr. Gray. Your ABS will be really good. Don't piss stuff. So paying attention to what he's talking about and everything. Looking at national weather. Our area between Perryville, St. Jen, and our area is a very, very big category. You know, of, of wind shear. So, um, I know tomorrow, we're gonna start off with a lot of heavy winds. Uh, they're probably, I don't know if they will have got one yet, which we probably won't get one till in the morning. But they probably will throw out a tornado watch. Anyways, tornado watches, that the conditions are favorable. Tornado warning is whenever a tornado happens. So if people, I know some people get stupid when they see a tornado watch, so. Uh, but I know it's coming in at eight o'clock. I know nice storms are not fun to play with. Have you ever done that? Um, so we will, you can look out if there is any significant warnings going out or anything. Odd stuff, I know Tyler here will be out, um, patrolling, kinda keeping an eye on this guy and radar. Oh, he's a, a weather weather spotter too, so we'll be all out. We will have contact with dispatch, if anything that we see abnormal in the sky or anything. Um, normally it's kinda nice when we have lightning shows, you can see everything. No, it's, yeah, that's all the last, the last one we didn't have.
No, no, no.
Um, but hopefully, if we don't get it, hopefully it dies down before this too, whatever. But we are in that circle of, you know, extreme wind shear, so.
Yeah, Frank, it's funny, but let's tail it on that, excuse me, but there is a, an area that these tornadoes seem to fall.
These tornadoes.
Yeah. I've seen the, that we went through St. Mary and over the years that I've been here, I've watched them. And I've watched it right through that area. And it's not north of town, it's not too much south of town, it's right through town.
I mean, I mean, we are actually pretty well in the middle of tornado.
Yeah, where Z Road is, that goes out toward the interstate there, north of Z Road, right to there, all the way through St. Mary. It's, I don't know if the lay of the land, uh, you know, what's happening.
It's just out of the, conditions are favorable in this area. I mean, if you're cool and warm, you know, pushing. I mean, I guess we're in that area where all weather is hitting this once, you know. But, I mean, the wind shear, what they're calling, you know, stating and stuff, and just, you know, which way the wind shear is going and stuff, that's where it pays into too. Um, I don't know if we're gonna get a significant amount of rain. But if, you know, just saying, has a meeting here and telling the public, if we do tornado sirens going off, don't go outside. Just start looking in the sky. Oh, cause they can come up on you pretty quick, don't even know the air. I don't know what, what they're looking at, so. Um, I know the last time, we was pretty faithful for not having to know any injuries or fatalities or anything like that, but, I mean, if you say on the outskirts, I mean, so. It's just one of the view, Mother Nature does what she wants.
Are there people that are designated here to, to follow that path once it goes through town? I know the Baptist church last time they had a tornado come through, they had a lot, I've, I've gotta tell you, need to thank those folks. Everyone door to door checking to make sure everybody was okay.
That was, when that happened, I was working high patrol. He had his crew, the fire department, media agent. So I had every, I had high patrolmen I could pull up there and at least grid the whole city off and then take it off.
Yeah.
So for the residents, it's important to have some extra water in case there's no water, no power essentially.
Water, um, charge your cell phones.
Essential.
Radio.
Or central, a weather, a weather radio.
Wouldn't it have been a good idea for people to fill up gallon jugs and put it in their basement? My dad did it all the time. I've got thirty, forty some jugs in my basement for emergencies.
Yeah. Well, we didn't have electricity for about four days last time.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So candles, candles light lantern, electric, where your flashlight's charged and available. Kinda like have a little go bag where the part of your house disappears. You have some dry clothes, so you can just grab it and go to the church or someplace or recover, essentially.
I mean, we're in a time of, time of year, we're spring. It's pretty close to spring.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So, uh, but the thing about it is, is I know this tornado time, I know the last time, we had such a bad wind shear. We can now hear across town. Um, but as in us as the chiefs and stuff and Jody over here, you know, we got radios. We see something abnormal or something in the sky, something's starting to hit the ground. Then we will contact, we dispatch, dispatch will notify, uh, National Weather Service and they will start throwing, dropping the warnings, so.
Yeah, don't send group texts out to, to your phones or something. It'd be, actually be nice for, even us, for the town to have a.
Everybody's got a Missouri or Mo alert.
Yeah.
So whenever we have a storm come in severe like that, everybody's phone's going off. I mean, it, it works, so.
Super.
I know the last time we ever, that's when they, I think it was first starting it up and then that storm come through in twenty-one. Anyways, our phones started going off as soon as I called it in.
And we didn't have any rain from that. We had just, it was windy.
Very, very low.
Very low.
Well, we had, had trees blowing inside of our vehicles, but it was okay, but.
Oh, I know where you missed that.
I know, I know Adam, whenever, he was on, uh, the police officer at the time and he actually had to get out of car and lay the ditch down here because then.
Yeah, he told me to dive in the ditch.
So.
Um, so.
You just gotta wanna play with your ditch.
Yeah. It's just warning everybody, I mean.
And this is that time of year too, we need to watch that and since Jody, who owns Sky Warner? Who, who owns the proprietary FCC rights to Sky Warner?
Sky, Sky Warner, basically amateur radio is basically the operators that, that run that.
Okay. Are you gonna be out?
I'll, I'll be out.
But the thing is, he, we have that position where he's not compensated in order for him to be on Randolph County and that. He can work under the police department. I don't care what beef with the fire department or whatever. But he can answer the chief, but he has to have some credentials either he'll get arrested if he's a weather spotter and driving, looking and following because he has a ZOa.
Yeah.
But he has no appointment and he works for us and it's, it's in the ordinance is over there.
Well, one, one, another thing too, is when that tornado went through, these guys are all tied up and everything. And I, I was going around helping clear branches and that and they had, we had people coming into town from St. Jen, rubber knickers.
Yeah.
So I, I think it was, the thing was you.
I authorized.
Yeah, you want me to go up to Jay and block it off, yeah. I'm sitting there with my car with the flashers going, four way flashers. I felt like an idiot, you know, I didn't have anything. So I simply got some amber. I mean, you can't miss them. Adam seen it, but, um, and I told him, I said, if I had, if I still had my blue light or blue and red light or something like that, I'd have done it. And then if I got in trouble for it, I, I'd take anything. I don't think anybody would defend anything, but.
Where do we stockpile all the traffic laws and stuff that go up in the street if they're blocked off?
They got blocked off pretty quick, I don't think.
State mode up, awesome, yeah. Do we have our own? Please do. There's not that many of them. You might get those together.
Were you here with that at the last up? You know, I was at home in bed, it was like nine o'clock, I think, when that thing went through. But I remember the siren going off and I'm thinking it was my, you know, I was asleep, something with my alarm, you know. And then I realized what it was and I sat up in bed and by the time I made it downstairs, I heard it. And, uh, I, you know, it's not like a truck or something, but I heard it go by.
Sounds like an airplane.
And I went out, I went out of my house. It would've hit me then. I left my house and went up my driveway and not one leaf was off a tree in my yard, nothing. I walked all the way down the driveway and got down to sixty-one and I saw your guys' lights on already, you know. So it was that fast.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, but, you know, it got water holes and that.
I actually, I actually with my gas camp, I got video of that and it went right beside, it was going right beside the room. I finally seen it. So it was, it was pretty special.
Yeah.
Cause he was sitting at the gas station and I got flying down sixty-one and I was like, get it, get in the safety. I was like, it's coming through town, so. Anyways, uh, it actually, the path it was on, he went the one way and then converted and that's, he might've caught up with it.
I drove by then. So my, my recommendation, according to the ordinance on board, is to appoint Jody under the police department since there was issues with the fire department that day is needed. Uh, for being a no weather spotter and all his FEMA certificates. So he has the credentials and not get in trouble again. And that way you oversee that. If he does violate it, but he does not get compensated, it's a volunteer position.
I can type out, like, I know there's like statewide recording emergencies like that with trained weather spotters and everything. I can type out like something on letterhead and sign off on it so you have something with it.
Cause he can go over on the ledge, which is illegal to be on, but he can see a lot from that ledge and he does. Cause I, he, I talked to him, I mean, he reached me and, I mean, we were talking that night every time we had wet bad weather.
I, I used to do that to your dad too.
Yeah. So, I mean, whatever happened in the past is a past. But if that's the case, I mean, it's an ordinance, it's, it's not a paid position. It's only one, there's bad storms, but it helps us have, it helps April too. In case something was bad, we have more than one, we're all, even all four of us are around, we got everything covered, so. And we can relay versus not and it, it's a lot less stressful, you know. But that's totally up to you. So I'm gonna leave it up to the board.
Yeah, and the darkest was, we were just saying about it, that one, that one, last one stayed on the ground a long time, didn't it?
Yeah.
It's just.
It actually started over and.
Yeah.
I remember that freaking bug, yeah.
The bad one before that was, there were a couple of them over there, period, but when the people got killed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was, yeah.
They're crossing the interstate. And I think there were two of those earlier.
And that whole school there.
So you mentioned about the board approving Jody.
The board has to do it. It's, but instead of the fire department, cause I think that's whatever it was, we'll put him under the police department and that way he's held by statute and everything else and by law. And if he violates it, you have to do your diligence, so.
Agreed.
All right, so we have motion to appoint Jody as, as needed, no weather spotter and FEMA. And he can help April with FEMA. He's got thirty FEMA certificates.
So I make a motion to appoint Jody as a PR, uh, weather spotter and, uh, and assistance with FEMA related activities as he's serviced, uh, certified.
I don't know if you wanna do it or not, but that, that ordinance that was done before, it was, it was called Emergency Management Coordinator.
Yeah.
And that's what I was before and then, because I resigned from the fire department, Carl fired me because of that. He said, if you're gonna lead the fire department, you, you, you know, what's stopping you?
Reinstate that. When reinstate that, you're gonna reinstate that since you're certified and then probably most qualified to do this. So, okay, back to, where were we?
You made a motion.
Motion. Do you have a second?
I'll make a second.
Motion made second to re-establish, uh, Emergency Management Coordinator, Jody Odom, on paper.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, motion passed. Get with him, he'll get you a start. All right. Um, anything? Oh, yeah. Street department, Doc, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing, I need more rock. I started, uh, last night I started putting, I noticed that new asphalt over this going from Miracle Manor down to Fifth Street, uh, has, uh, like the end of the road is, is crumbled with a couple areas. So there needs to be reinforced with rock to, uh, support. Do you need a little bit of help with bigger or you want a mix? Uh, I would prefer, uh, bigger, like two inch first.
I got two inch clean.
Yeah, two inch clean and two or three is, you know, it's about two inches probably fine. And I started, I probably did, I don't know, fifty yards of the road from the pile that you put there. And I would dump it roughly in the same spot. I dump it in two places when you deliver it. One where he did and one, I know on the side where you go up to the order tower so that I can feed both sides of the road.
I put it, I put it in that little alleyway. Right there where the side is where it intersects with, uh, town and, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right past our driveway.
Yeah, that little, where Al used to go around.
That was our flood river at the time.
Okay, that's mine.
Yeah, so if you split it off that way, I don't have to drive all the way up to down there. And I'll be on.
We're not only waiting after the storm, are we? Of course, okay. I'm acting it down. I don't know when you want it to go.
But this, that takes pride in it around.
Yeah. I didn't know how bad it was, if it was undermining, I would say, well, I'll get on right now.
Uh, it's, you know, it's cracked in a couple spots, so I already reinforced, you know, materials with the larger rock and the broken asphalt. Probably gets you busted up with the sludge and wrecked into smaller pieces. Uh, and so I stopped, I did a little stop sign on that and stop sign side of the road and then the other, I just started going down to a big tree. But anyway, I need more because there's quite a bit of drop off. Okay, from the edge of the road, they're on the grass.
All right. Anything else, street wise?
No.
Okay. Uh, down, water, wastewater?
Uh, well, wastewater, that was the, uh, kinda maintenance issues that we discussed already in the bearing. And, uh, other than that, there's no, there's no real issues, I think.
Uh, you know, I didn't think it would be a waste of water, aside, uh, a lift station pump is, um, down there that we, uh, used to decant or water off back to the clarifier or a mesh liquor dish. And then that's where we dump that for whenever we had an issue with a grinder. And we gotta, uh, pump them out. That's where it goes to. Um, the pump's starting to hood its head, so I'm thinking that either the cutting wheel's going on it or, um, it's just shot. But I think I got another one down there that will fit that one, if there were a shot. And, um, I'm gonna go out there and replace it.
Now you have to learn those parts, set up those, you got to.
Uh, and. The other thing is too, is, uh, um, worked on a couple grinders, had to replace some contacters. The other thing is too, is, uh, um, worked on a couple grinders, had to replace some contactors, uh, replaced a flow on another one. Uh, a couple of areas had, had grease, had to clean the grease off flows and they're working properly now, um. Everything is, I was gonna ask the guys with the slits hauling, nobody's talking about doing it every year. Um, I think we can wait until after spring and all that, I don't know if we got enough room in there. But maybe, um, August, it has talked they're rainy, to see whenever we can schedule to haul it, having it got such a big amount.
Right.
Um, that way, uh, it should be dry season then, case season will be over with and stuff, you know.
Is it currently drawn off and put in that square pit?
So, so let's go over to that square pit, then decan the water back off of, put it back over into the mix liquor.
Yeah.
And that's where that pump's for.
Oh, okay.
And then process happen again in another few days, you know, we keep it down. Just depending on where our level is or our P S is, if it's extremely high or if it's starting to get low, I might skip a week and dump, you know, just depending on where it's sitting at, so. Um, water side, water sample's been good. Genope, which you, uh, delivered that, uh, for me last week or whatever, they called me today for repairs. Uh, I gotta call him back tomorrow, I guess he left, go home and I call. Um, anyways, uh, I gotta call him back, uh, I don't know if it's gonna be repaired or not, uh, wait, he's talking on my voicemail. So I gotta call him, see what's going on with that. Uh, we did order a new one, the other one is up there, it's working like it should. Um, we do have a couple of issues up at the tower that I have to fix, which is not a biggie, but I'd like to get it done before summertime and, uh, we do have an issue, so, um, it's not really that big of an issue as in, we're gonna lose one or two ages, uh, Genope, where it feeds out and stuff, so. Another day, that's all we had.
Alright. Um, Park and Cemetery, Rose? I don't know, Brian, do you want, which one, you know, we gotta get Rose on. Who wants what?
Well, I don't think either Rose or myself are gonna sign anything really, but.
You've been assigned administration, alright, yeah.
That means fours.
Oh.
So how about the ghost in the cemetery?
Still there.
Alright, alright.
I'm gonna drive him through there too.
The cemetery? Oh, okay, yeah, so that's it, alright.
Was there anything on Park Cemetery or?
Damn, he tells me, I don't know why animals chosen.
I don't know.
Yeah, whatever. Alright, um, citizens participation, anybody wanna speak, uh, Miss?
Um, Maria Thompson, they called me because there was a dog at her place and it was blocking her from entering her home and she was really worried about it and eventually they got St. Genovee Animal Control to come out.